Justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McCaffrey.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bead.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vanenbach.
Here.
Chairman Ball.
Here.
Items three additions, deletions, changes to the agendas, two additions, A and B.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to add the Michigan Convention Center COVID-19 Grant Relief Program and the proclamation for National Nurses Week?
Second. Well, any discussion? We'll add these as items T and U, the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations, I think we have two proclamations. We will actually get those to the individuals at a later date, but I need a motion for both proclamations.
I would make a motion that we approve the proclamation recognizing that policy for years of service.
Support.
There is one more, two out there, there was two proclamations.
Two, it's for Nurse.
Nurses Week, yes, and so, okay. So just add that to a motion for both of them.
Or do you have it? I haven't, she's got the Nurses Week one if you want a separate one.
Um, just two in one motion, there's proclamations. You guys want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I'd amend it, it includes both.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent agendas, items A through J.
Chairman, I'd move for the approval of item seven, eight through seven J on the consent agenda.
He skipped me.
Okay, uh, discussion.
What happened, Georgia?
Minutes of the previous meeting?
No, we did that in the A through, we said both of them.
Got it?
No.
I made the motion. I missed it.
Yeah. Did the approval agenda then?
I don't think, I, I don't know that we did the minutes.
No, we approved both, both proclamations.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't do the minutes.
But we didn't do both minutes.
How about I just make a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Thank you.
Discussion, all in favor? Back to the consent agenda, A through J.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve items seven, eight through seven J on the consent agenda.
Support.
Uh, discussion on any of those items? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, reports of standing special committees, I'm going to start with, uh, actually David, I'll start with you. Can you hear me, David? Okay, let's move on to Greg.
Um, I have none tonight.
Georgia?
Yep, I do have a couple, uh, Carrie is going to go into, uh, a couple of these in more detail.
David, you have a really bad delay on that. Okay, Georgia?
So Carrie's going to go into a couple of these in more detail, but I did want to thank the Port Huron Rotary for recognizing 21 different department heads and coming to the last meeting, and for the EDA and the Health Department for their collaboration on the Vaccination Clinic for employees within the city of Port Huron and an upcoming one in Fort Grashit. Uh, I think those both went really well from everything that I've heard, and I think it's important for a lot of different reasons. Then I had gotten a call, uh, from a resident, and I know that we all occasionally get calls from people, and sometimes it's things that maybe you can help them with, and sometimes it's, you can't. Um, this particular one, though, led me down a path to reach out to Deb Johnson with Community Mental Health, and, um, maybe how to get someone, some, some needed help, and she reminded me of the Mobile Crisis Unit. So at some point, I'd like for Deb or someone from Community Mental Health to come in and, um, maybe discuss the different things, because for as quickly as we were able to act, I think it probably made a really big impact for this particular person. Um, and I know I've heard of the, um, Mobile Crisis Unit and things like that, but until you're kind of faced with a situation where maybe it, it would apply, you might, might forget about it a little bit. So, uh, but there's apps, there's a number, the Mobile Crisis Unit, it's a 24 hours, seven days a week, and they can get to a person if that person is already maybe working with someone in Community Mental Health, or maybe that would be a good place for them to start, uh, but it was, it was a good reminder that those, those services are out there. Um, and then, sorry, I'm trying to go quick. Uh, but yeah, maybe at some point if Deb could come out, um, another place to find all of those telephone numbers is SCCCMH.org, and, uh, to get to all of their access lines. And then lastly, I was appointed to the Semcog Regional Review Committee, uh, and this is, it only meets maybe a couple of times a year, but it, um, helps select projects funded by CHAP, uh, special, other special programs and oversight of the Toddman Fellowship Program. So I'm excited to get started on that.
Lisa?
Um, just from the Health Department, and I'd like to make everyone aware of the Free COVID Clinic, um, that's tomorrow at the Harvey Reinvestment Center. They're doing first doses that you have to be registered for from noon until Q, and then second doses, you have to register or walk in, but they're doing it from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. It's in collaboration with, um, the Community Foundation of St. Clair County, so the first 200 people that go or show that they've been vaccinated can get a $5 voucher to make a trip to the food truck that's there. So whatever it takes to get you there, to get vaccinated, um, we just continue to encourage the community to get vaccinated. There's definitely, uh, a deficit and a long way for our community to go to get vaccinated.
Okay, uh, Duke?
David. Um, we had a great meeting down, and I think we're going to talk about it later.
Okay, uh, just, uh, touch base too, and Nancy's here. So myself and Dave and Nancy actually met with the Marine City Chamber. Many of you know that we're working on the City Marina project down there. Um, we talked to some of our, um, local foundations that had, um, had expressed an interest in helping participate in funding that, they had actually asked for a grant request to come before them. So Nancy is now our, um, quasi parching rep director, and, uh, so she's going to be assisting the Chamber along with Laura Huskatcha and helping them, uh, write for that for, um, uh, this, this main, um, grant series. So, yeah, that's it. And I'll be talking about 26 Mile Road Corridor study before that. So citizens wishing to address the board, Ms. Windsor, would you like to come up here and introduce yourself?
Well, I know, I know many of you, um, but I wanted to again, uh, thank you for this opportunity. Um, I'm super excited to get a chance to work with St. Clair County, and I, I wanted to thank Jeff and Carrie and the Commission for being open to this innovative partnership with Port Huron. I do think there's a lot that we can do together, and I'm super excited to make that happen. In the upcoming weeks, um, April, Mark is still in charge, and he, I'm following around like a little puppy dog, you know, seeing everything I can see, and, uh, he's been super helpful. I just have to give a big hats off to him because for us that are in the field, these parks are beautiful. Like the parks that we have in St. Clair County, these destination parks that he's built, his staff seems very passionate about parks, and when you go there, they're clean, they're, they're, they're great. And they, one of my first goals is to just get that word out to as many people as possible, because I don't know, but we always realize how blessed we are to have the great parks we do in St. Clair County, and not only with the county, but all the different, um, government entities as well. So in the upcoming months, um, in May, he will be stepping back and letting me try to muddle my way through and be here to consult with me in May, and then in June, um, he will officially retire. And, and I've been working with him since I've been just a little person in recreation, and I just again wanted to wish him the best, because he's done a really great job for St. Clair County, and I'm super appreciative of that. So, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to also just in the upcoming months getting like a baseline of what's going on in parks, and then, um, maybe getting a chance to talk to all the local government entities and see what things that we can do. I know we met in Marine City today, which was really good, so if there's things that we can help with and just kind of understanding what's going on, but I'm, I'm very excited and I appreciate the opportunity, so, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And Nancy did go to Harvard of the North, Central Michigan, that's right. Full disclosure. No one finished with business to go for us. Uh, 11 A, the 26 Mile Road Corridor Study. I guess we're going to tag team this a little bit with Dan Casey's here and Dave Struck this evening. I'll let Dan talk a little bit about, um, now, what we have, hold this down for a sec, because I'm going to do some talking. So, we've obviously had lots of conversations about, um, the large piece of parcels no longer available. There are, you know, there are a few different pieces out there, but when we start talking 100 acres plus water sewer, so on and so forth, um, there's nowhere to even respond to respondents. And I think we've had to turn down four requests in the last month. Um, large, you know, large tract lands, 3 billion, 1 billion, 500 million, you know, this kind of stuff, you know, big stuff. And, um, so obviously I've talked to many of you about it. We had a meeting yesterday that Dan organized, what do we have, 40 people or so in that meeting? So it was everybody along the 26 Mile Road Corridor. We had representation from IRA, China, um, um, Casco, um, and, um, Cotreville. And then, and then the water and sewer people from Marine City, water and sewer people from so on, so. So we had a good mix of people in the room just to talk about 26 Mile Road. Dan had talked about the issues that, that he faces, and really the question was to ask the question, if we're willing to take this leap of faith and look at 26 Mile Road as the next major hub, um, do people want development? Because if the answer is no, we don't want it, then that's fine, you know, so, so be it, we'll move on and look to do some things somewhere else. And, um, after the meeting, uh, everybody, it was, it, it, um, it went, I didn't say I was going to, I didn't know what I was going to expect coming out, you know, going in there, and coming out of that meeting, it was better than anticipated. The meeting went very well, and I think that those, um, different townships along there will want to proceed. We had actually asked the individual townships if they would like to us to come make a presentation to them to talk about why we're looking at 26 Mile Road, so we will be doing, um, that piece of it. But I think there's some things that we can also simultaneously work on, um, coming up. But I'm, I'll defer to you, Dan, here for just talk a little bit about 26, maybe why it makes sense.
Yeah, so, um, good evening, Commissioners, it's good to be back in front of you again. Uh, it's funny how these things can come about. Um, this discussion actually originated a couple of years ago when, uh, we created a new Blue Meets Green Priority Project, which was to develop a large piece of property for the next big industrial park. Now, there were a lot of other projects to work on, so that wasn't at the top of the heap, so to speak. Um, and so we worked on accomplishing some other things, and on the side, we were working on that project, trying to identify land. But honestly, in the county, our biggest, one of our biggest constraints is availability of water and sewer. We have land all over the place, but finding, um, land that's situated close to water and sewer, that's also close to, um, interchanges, expressways, and so forth, that can be problematic. Um, and so it began with that discussion, and then fast forward a little bit, um, we've been working on some pretty big projects in that corridor. IRA Township has been pretty aggressive and interested in growth, and so we've been working with them on some projects. And then at the other end of the corridor, at the east end, um, in China Township by Marine City, there's a large greenhouse project we spent, uh, more than a year working on. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like it's going to go there now, but we spent, uh, more than a year looking for a site for that and eventually settled on some property that's right on the corner of King Road and Marine City Highway. And so that brought into play the question about what kind of infrastructure was there to support that development. And it was there, but it wasn't. And so a lot of conversations were started with community leaders in both of those communities, Marine City and there, and also later in Cotreville Township. And then one thing led to another. Um, then we had a discussion a few months ago with some property owners over by the airport, who largely, besides the airport itself, there were some industrial type users, Cordis Brothers, Iroquois Industries, some other people, that wanted to tap into a water line. There happened to be one on Palms Road, but that's a mile and a half away from their property, right? So that conversation was out there, what can we do to get that extended? And then as we moved down the street, more recently, uh, some developers who own property at the corner of County Line Road and Marine City Highway on the Casco Township side, came in and met with me, and they wanted to know what kind of development would make sense for that corner. Their original plan was residential, uh, but they have a lot of wetlands to deal with. And they wanted to take advantage of, um, how that corridor is going to grow in the future, and they wanted to know my opinion of what was going to happen there. They wanted to also feed off of some of the momentum that's growing on the Macomb County side of that border, where you have the Beaumont facility under construction, and you have another medical facility that's planned for construction across from the Meyer. And I know, having worked with hospitals in the past, that they very carefully choose the locations where they want to put these facilities, and they don't put them in the suburbs usually, and they don't put them in, in cities, right, or inner cities. They put them on the fringes where they expect development to happen. And they do research, um, pretty intense research to figure out where those places are. So the fact that those two facilities are going there should tell you that they're anticipating that there will be commercial, some retail, and, and most likely residential development occurring up and down that corridor, including in St. Clair County. And so looking at all of those various issues, it became pretty evident to us that that corridor is going to be one of the next big corridors to develop in the county. It, and it might take five or 10 years before it really gets going. But in the meantime, the question is, what should we be doing as government, um, agencies to prepare for it? Do we have master plans with zoning that actually makes sense for what's most likely to, to be developed first? Do we have plans to put in center turn lanes so that, because that road's already getting bad with traffic, right? So do we have the ability to put in a center turn lane? Do we have the easements for it? And do we have water and sewer capacity or the ability to expand it? And do we have communities that are interested in funding and supporting it? And so we began having that conversation with the communities yesterday. I was very encouraged by what I heard from all of the community leaders. In particular, and I'm not naming names or anything, but I, I've been a little concerned about Cotreville Township, because when they put the water line down Palms Road, that was pretty controversial. And that was a project that EDA was involved in years ago. So, um, I was a little bit concerned about what that would mean for them. But they stood up and said they have five of the six of their elected officials are in favor of it. And, um, so that gives us some great opportunities to develop a partnership with all of those communities to move forward. Now, we have some opportunities with, potentially with ARPA funding, which, uh, I'm sure all of you will have some tough decisions to make in the future. But is that money potentially going to be eligible to support some of this infrastructure growth? Uh, those are conversations that, you know, are beginning to happen at the early stages, but we need to learn more about, um, what, what is eligible for those funds to be used for? What's the timing of that? When does the money have to be spent by? Um, one of the action items that came out of yesterday's meeting was, um, a suggestion to do a road corridor study, which would involve metro planning, Dave and Jeff and their team, uh, potentially hiring a planning consultant to help with that. And the goal is to evaluate all of the zoning uses that currently exist today along the road corridor, to look at where existing infrastructure is, what the capacity is of those systems today, to handle potential growth, to look at the road itself, what kind of road improvements are needed, what might that cost to upgrade? What's the timing of that? And then probably the most important thing of all is what is the development potential for the road? In other words, when might it come, and what will we expect to see? So if there's going to be some residential, well, how much residential is feasible in the next five to 10 years? You need to know that as you're starting to look at sizing your water and sewer lines, right? How many taps are you going to need and so forth? Do you have enough capacity today? Can you make the investment five or 10 years from now? Or should you be more proactive and begin making those changes today? So we're in the very early stages of having these conversations. Um, I think it's very important for the county to try to get out in front of this, because if you don't, what happens is you're going to have a hodgepodge of uses, uh, along that corridor in different places. They're not necessarily going to be compatible, especially when you have different communities that are involved. Um, they're not always on the same page in terms of how they want their corridors or their properties to be developed. So, uh, I, I love the idea of doing this, this corridor study, because that gets all the communities in the room. They're all kind of looking at the whole corridor instead of just the piece of it that they normally would have jurisdiction over. So that's kind of where we are with that. I'll, I'll take any questions that you might have. Dave, I don't know if you want to make any comments?
Yeah, Dave, why don't you jump up there?
Good evening, Commissioners. So basically, for all the reasons that Dan just mentioned, I mean, this is a prime, uh, time and opportunity to go after a corridor study like this. I mean, this is a unique opportunity to basically establish a blueprint for this corridor. Um, you know, in light of all the infrastructure funding, the potential infrastructure funding that's coming down the pipe, you know, Dan mentioned the ARPA funds, but we're going to have, uh, you know, there's a potential reauthorization of the transportation bill right now that might get lumped into the President Biden's Build Back Better Plan. Um, so these are things that are currently in Washington. Um, these funds are going to be wide-ranging for infrastructure, so we're talking roads, bridges, schools, broadband. You know, almost everything under the sun has been talked about in terms of infrastructure. And Dan also mentions, you know, a hodgepodge of, of sort of planning right now. If you look at the communities along the corridor right now, the master plans that are currently in place are, are, you know, many of them haven't been updated since the mid 2000s. So, you know, we have to ask ourselves, are we equipped right now? As these funds come down the, the pipe, are we equipped to respond in a proactive way instead of being reactive? You know, we know that these funds are going to be available potentially for, uh, multi-year, uh, type deals, and we want to make sure that, you know, as those, those different funding opportunities come up, that we've got a plan in place to, to be proactive and go after those funds. And, you know, it's no secret that whenever we go after any sort of state or federal funding, if you can show that your projects are in a plan, that's got wide-scale buy-in, uh, multiple communities are involved, those are always going to fare well, particularly in competitive grant, uh, situations. So, um, you know, we do have a model for doing this. Back in 2001, 2002, we had a Range Road Corridor Study that was done involving five communities along Range Road. Um, and that looked at everything, you know, planning and zoning, land use. Um, that's the biggest key, is kind of looking at what currently do these communities have in terms of future land use? And in this case, we need to really take into account what's going on in Lenox Township, Chesterfield Township. You know, we know Chesterfield Township just recently updated their master plan in 2020. They're calling for mixed uses across, uh, right at the highway interchange there. Um, you know, like I said, some of our master plans are, they're quite old, and, and right now, we've got some inconsistencies in terms of what's planned for future land use. And as Dan said, I mean, when he's got the opportunity potentially bringing a company and, you know, he's got to go and sit through, you know, a rezoning process, that's not something that bodes well for, you know, being amenable to development. So one of the things that this corridor study can do is look at those future land use issues, make sure that we've got consistency across the board. Um, in many cases, like in the Range Road Corridor example, the communities actually came up with a, a zoning overlay that kind of went across the entire corridor. So across five communities, it was kind of uniform zoning for the, the project area. So that's something that could be borne out in this. Um, you know, certainly there's, there's a lot of other factors that could go into this, so, you know, water sewer capacity, um, transportation improvement, streetscape, um, signage, access management issues. You know, so, you know, our recommendation would be to essentially get the project partners together, um, basically define a scope of work in terms of what it is. We want to get out of this thing, um, you know, coordinating capital improvements, future planning, and developing RFP to go after a planning consultant that could sort of, uh, you know, manage this process and develop the overall plan. So that's really the, kind of what the corridor study would entail in a nutshell. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, or if you, Commissioners, have any questions?
I have talked to, here's my suggestion. Dan Casey, Dave Struck, Kurt Weston, Bill Hazelton, Steve Kason is actually the planner for IRA, Casco, and China. Steve is the Retired Economic Development Director, Planning Director for Macomb County. I've known him a long time, you guys know him, very sharp guy, happy to see that he was sitting in that room. Get together, and I've talked to everybody, and, you know, they're fine with, um, putting this little thing together too. Really to come up with an RFP, there's no reason we can't get an RFP put together, that we can't go out and solicit bids for, um, you know, for this, because we still have some homework to do to go talk to the other communities, so on and so forth. So we can at least get an idea of what we're looking at, what we're talking about costs, you know, those types of things. But if we're going to commit and look at 26 Mile Road, we are absolutely, this is going to be the first thing that needs to be done, you know, before we even move, just to get, like you said, consistency in zoning and that. I mean, if, um, as I said before, this is going to be a heavy lift, and these small communities do not have the ability to write checks to do that at all. They, they don't, they barely get any money off development on top of it, you know, .75, maybe 1, tops, right? So, um, I would suggest that would be the first step, just get you guys together and get something together. Same time we can do the Rubber Chicken Circuit per se, and go talk to everybody. Um, we're going to East China on Monday to present to them. Um, East China has some potential with water and sewer to be able to maybe, you know, intertwine some of the systems. For example, we had met with, uh, East China previous to talk about St. Clair, because St. Clair's capacity is maxed out in their system. If they want to expand, you know, north, we could take actually some of the sewer from St. Clair, put it into the East China system. I, I got to give other communities credit, that everyone's really playing very well together. 15 years ago, we wouldn't, we wouldn't even have got that meeting together, it would have been a waste of time, right? But everybody sees the same thing, and I think everybody understands with, we, we have water coming out of our eyeballs, no pun intended, I mean, we have water, you know, these plants are running at 25% type of capacity. We can, we can get water down 26 Mile Road, no problem. The sewer is going to be, that's the, uh, that's the difficult one, yeah. So start looking at this thing, and it's going to be, uh, this is long-term planning. Uh, I did pose the question at the, you know, at the end of the day, and I would pose this question even to the Commissioners, if not 26 Mile Road, i- if I'm missing something here, let me know. Should we be looking, you know, somewhere else with all the factors that Dan has to deal with, you know, with large pieces, this, 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 you know? I'll go back to my Magna Plant, 544,000 a year in new taxes, even after all the abatements and all the stuff, that's phase one. So these are big-ticket home run items, if you can land them. And, um, so, and, and nobody, and nobody in the room said, no, this is, you know, 26 you shouldn't be looking at. I think everybody agrees that that's the next, you know, hub. So, if you guys are cool with it, I would like that little four group to get together, go get some, uh, requests for proposals, uh, bring it back to us. It's going to take you some time, you know, and it's going to take us some time to do what we got to do too. So we really know what we're talking about, you know? Do you guys think that makes sense, or am I, am I wrong?
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes. All right. You got your marching orders. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, Jeff Donaldson. the county's had for quite some time. They've done a few projects in the past with us, with these funds. There's an opportunity that, we have a project that may be able to use these funds on a short-term loan type of situation. Money's been sitting there, I don't even know when the last time it's been out on the street. You can share that with the Commissioners and stuff, but what you talked about just, Jeff?
Yeah, well, thank you. Thanks for inviting me up here, and yet I think you touched upon some of the points. The Planning Commission, Metropolitan Planning Commission, has approximately $405,000 in housing and urban development program income funds. We've, they date back to the early 80s, to the best of our recollection and records. They've been recycled several times through the decades, mostly for various housing programs, homeowner rehab type of situations, whatnot, small, small loan situations, that sort of thing. So there's been different ways we've leveraged these funds throughout the years to bring, you know, leverage private investment as well. Recently, we were asked to look into an opportunity and put these funds out there through, as Commissioner Bum just mentioned, a low-interest, short-term loan program that could support a range of housing needs that have been identified and proposed down in the city of St. Clair. As you know, and as we talked about, just the other project that my colleagues were just talking about, Magna International is building in the St. Clair Industrial Park. The job creation down there is expected to create some demand in housing and various housing needs. Planning staff has been in discussions with the Detroit HUD Field Office about the funds that we have, and we verified that a loan program targeting these kind of very different kinds of housing needs would be absolutely an appropriate use of the funds. Some of the priorities that we would take into account if we were to, as we're looking to put together a loan program initiated with these funds, would include insuring funds or extended to any sort of private entity or developer to facilitate the housing needs, would be secured with a primary position or be well collateralized. We'd also make sure we structure any such loan programs so the funds are repaid in a short period of time to ensure that if there are other available needs arises, we can access those funds again sometime in the short term, near, near future. So we're working currently with Corporation Council to put together, because this would be a customized loan program. It's, these dollars have been their program income because we've put them out there on the street and gotten them back enough times. We're sort of the masters, our masters of our own destiny with these funds. So there's not a structure in terms of how to set together, put together a loan program, but it's like I, like I mentioned, the HUD Field Office said, go for it as long as you, you know, reasonably meet the national objectives of HUD, and definitely going after various housing needs would do that. So we're working with Corporation Council to put together talking points of how a loan program would, how it would look, making sure that, of course, we're secure with these funds, we've got a good position on them, and also that they can come back to us in, what I'd say relatively short order, so that as other needs arise, we can be responsive with them again.
Any questions for Jeff at all?
So this money would just be used, say, to build a low-income home? And then when the house sells, the money would come back?
Not necessarily home. We're looking at a specific project right now that they had requested, larger, it's a conversion project down there, that would help put some money into the project, meets all the housing goals, but two, three years kind of stuff. We're not putting this out 10 years, you know? I mean, right now it's sitting there, we haven't used the money and...
I think the last time we used them would have been about eight years ago.
Yeah, so it's not like these things are in there...
They're in a CD right now.
And they can't be used in the city of Port Huron, because the city of Port Huron has their own CBG funding and stuff, so you take Port Huron out of the equation, then you have to meet these other HUD requirements, you know? A $300,000 home is not a HUD requirement, right? Generally conversions of older buildings, meeting income thresholds, you know? I mean, there's different things that we're looking at. We do have one project that meets the blue meets green criteria too. You know, I so often, if these types of monies come available, I go to the blue meets green list to say, is there any way that these monies can be helped to achieve something on that list, right? And this would be a total repayment. This isn't a, you know, freebie handed over.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Especially one that's just sitting there, not being utilized.
Yeah, make better than our .05% or whatever we're getting on the money.
And I should add, while they're, they have not, they're not being currently utilized, in the past, what's triggered utilization of them has been various programs that have come down the pike from the national or the state level, from a housing perspective, and we've used those funds to leverage other funds coming down those, from those programs. We just haven't seen anything like that in the last few years that we've done in the past, so that's why they have not been put out there on the street again.
And some of these, in the specific project that we're looking at, is a much more larger, I would call it impactful type of project than maybe a house in a neighborhood that you did a, you know, $20,000, you know, fix me up on it. We're talking a project that's already going to have, I won't say tens of millions, but it's going to definitely have millions invested in it, so it's just another little, another little kicker, I guess. So, so get with Gary, figure that out, and then I'm sure he'll be coming back to us at a later date. I just wanted to let you know that they are available, and if it's something we should really be looking at to participate in some of these projects, if it, you know, checks our criteria and... Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, approval of county dispersments.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 2021 county dispersments in the amount of $20,025,791 and 43 cents.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion on any of these? Roll call.
Commissioner McColl.
Yes.
Commissioner Bead.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Vanavas.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Baldwin.
Yes. Item D, the resolution of the equalization report. If you guys have any questions on this at all, I got Justin in attendance tonight on anything that may be specific, it's pretty standard stuff.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 21-05, approving the 2001 St. Clair County Equalization Report.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, the library request.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the library request to close the main branch at 4:00 PM on July 21, 2021, and to close all branches on October 11, 2021 for staff training and development.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, 2021 Homeland Security Grant Program.
I would make a motion to prove the fiscal year 2021 Operation Stone Garden Grant application for emergency management in the amount of $285,000.
Support.
Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Contract approval request.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the contract arrangement, attorney agreement for the public defender's office with Teresa Novosel for a one-year term, the amount of $25,000.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Vanavas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bead.
Yes.
Commissioner McColl.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Baldwin.
Yes. Item H, the 2020 Drain Commissioner's Annual Report.
I make a motion to approve the 2020 Drain Commissioner's Annual Report.
Second.
Discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Goodell's Historic Buildings Cedar Shingles Replacements.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the contract with reasonable contracting services incorporated for the removal and replacement of the roofing of the historic village schoolhouse and farmhouse at Goodell's County Park in an amount not to exceed $46,121.57.
Support.
I would just echo, I think, what Nancy said earlier, we met, and what I think the first comment you made to me, Nancy, was, you've been going on all the tours of the facilities, and she was like, man, you guys got some really nice stuff. And if you look around, we got some really nice stuff, and it's well-maintained, well kept up, you know, you know, with the support of the millage, obviously, that, that is, and we've got, we built first-class stuff, so... Roll call.
Commissioner Vanavas.
Yes.
Commissioner McColl.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Bead.
Yes.
Chairman Baldwin.
Yes. Item J, the Fleet Repair and Maintenance RFP Results and Agreements.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Fleet Repair and Maintenance Agreement with Mobile One Loop Express in the amount not to exceed $25,000. Marysville Tire and Auto in the amount not to exceed $175,000. And Fleet Services, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $500,000 for each. Each a term of $5,212,243.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Vanavas.
Yes.
Commissioner McColl.
Yes.
Commissioner Bead.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Baldwin.
Yes. Item K, the Manning Table Request Reclassification Proposal for Registered Deeds.
I would make a motion to approve the request to reclassify a Clerk II position to a Clerk III in the Register of Deeds Manning Table.
Support.
Discussion. Can we throw a pay cut in there for Jay?
Amen.
Story of my life.
Staff that wants you already?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Community Mental Health Board.
This time I'd like to make a motion to appoint Cynthia Cutwright, District 2, to the Community Mental Health Board for a three-year term expiring 3/31/2024. Support.
Discussion.
No, I actually talked to Deb Johnson shortly after she went with Cynthia, and she felt like Cynthia was going to be a great fit. She was really excited to welcome her to our board, so...
Good.
Cynthia is heavily involved in the, she's the DDA Director for Port Huron, and she sits on the Port Huron Museum Board.
Yep.
Yeah, she's, she's great, so I'm excited to have her there too.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The Library System Digital Magazines.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the addition of digital magazine content to the Overdrive, Inc. agreement in the amount of $10,000 annually.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Bead.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Vanavas.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McColl.
Yes.
Chairman Baldwin.
Yes. Item N, Resolution 21-6.
I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 21-06, authorizing Kerry Hefting as Administrator Controller, engineer absent, David Struck, Deputy Administrator, as officer, authorized signatories of the County of St. Clair Municipal.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Policy 312 Hiring Cost.
These next policies you see before you are, most of the verbiage comes from our existing employee handbook. As you know, from the policies you've been seeing over the past several months, we are transitioning away from having an employee handbook and putting everything in its own separate policy. So these include a little bit of cleanup language, but no substantive changes over what's in our existing handbook. We'll be seeing probably another batch of them coming to you next month as well. We have about 15 to 20 more policies to get through, and then we'll have our handbook transitioned out into a policy format. I can answer any specific questions you might have on any of these policies, though.
Anybody? I'll actually need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to forward the May Regular Board meeting to the recommendation to approve Policy 312 Recruitment and Hiring Policy.
Support. Discussion.
Can we roll into what?
Yeah, we'll do it virtually, there's not that many. All in favor? Policy 332.
This time I'd like to make a motion to forward to the May Regular Board meeting the recommendation to approve Policy 322 Employment Practices. 322.
So better.
Gary, I've got a different, is it 332? On my other sheet, I have 322.
I believe it's 332.
I will amend my motion to say 332.
Gary, anything you want to talk about that at all?
Nope, it's the same on all of these, it's just, the majority of it's our existing handbook language with a little cleanup.
If there's a difference, could we get just a notation saying that we're changing X to, right? I mean, as we look at them, for the next ones that are coming through?
So typically, we do show track changes. Let me just pull up my copy here to see what came through on the agenda.
See it on 312. It's in red.
Yes.
Just, just the changes are noted.
Yep, that's correct. If you don't see any changes, then it should be the existing language.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item Q, Policy 341.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to forward the May Regular Board meeting to the recommendation to approve Policy 341 Discipline and Disturbance.
Second.
Got anything on that one, Carrie?
No.
Yeah? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Policy 342 Salary and Wages Policy.
At this time, I make a motion to forward to the May Regular Board meeting the recommendation to approve Policy 342 Salary and Wages Policy. Support.
Anything?
This is just making the language consistent with what's in union contracts.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Policy 346 Timekeeping.
Ironically, I'm always late, so it's funny that I'm on this one. I'd like to make a motion to forward to the May Regular Board meeting the recommendation to approve Policy 346 Timekeeping.
So forward, instead of being late, we'll be slow.
So we can put, if you're not in there 15 minutes earlier than occupied, or... Do we?
We have a motion to support, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item T, which is the Michigan Convention Center COVID Relief Grant Program Application.
Chairman, I would move to approve the Michigan Convention Center COVID-19 Relief Grant Program Application in the amount of $555,377 for the Blue Under Convention Center.
Support.
Discussion.
Is this, so, is that the one that the threshold was changed?
Well, it's kind of funky, because on the application, there was, actually in the legislation, there was no threshold. When it hit the MEDC application, on their application, they put a threshold. We're working with Dan Lauer's office, actually Ron Cook and actually Gray Top, and those guys are all over this thing, trying to get the big tweak and clarification. We're like, if you go per the numbers on the application, we're $10,000 off, but we're the only one that would be, depending on how you look at it, excluded from it, we're the only one that meets criteria. So the state of Michigan put 10 million bucks, give or take, 8 million, 10 million aside, it's Cobal Hall, Sagatow, Miss Keegan, one more, and then we would be, actually, we may check all the boxes, so... Carrie, it's over you.
So in talking with Strategic Communications, we are applying for this funding because we are hearing of convention centers already starting to get awarded this, and we do know that all awards are made by May 1st. So while for the application, it doesn't appear we qualify, for the legislation for this funding, there was no population threshold, so we are submitting our application and then working with legislators to see if we can get some clarification to be eligible for this funding to help offset some of our losses for the convention center not operating this past year.
All right, okay. All in favor?
Aye.[1732.42]
As part of that, they have implemented standard five that we have to comply with beginning October 1 and that is for our indigent defense, complete separation from the judiciary. As you know, we do have a public defender's office and the courts were still maintaining parts of it for the roster attorneys. In some cases, they were still appointing attorneys to different cases and we've been slowly transitioning 100% of that to the public defender's office. So we're pretty confident it'll be a smooth transition for that standard five, but you will see that compliance plan come before you next month, the application for your Earlier today, the Community Services Coordinating Body called a special meeting to discuss vaccinations in the county. Dr. Merkentant was there, Dan Casey was there, just to discuss some of the efforts to reach out to communities, employers, to increase our vaccinations. Our clinics have been going very well, but we're getting to the point where our mass vaccine clinics were not filling our appointments, so we're offering walk-ins. So we're looking at ways of doing a decentralized model to get out more into the different communities. Companies want to host vaccine clinics, they can work with us on that. We do ask for a minimum number of participation, certainly we don't want to mobilize if we're only going to be doing two people, so similar to what happened for City of Port Huron employees, you know, several gathering together. So what they're asking is just everybody to spread the word, encourage people to still go on the health department site to pre-register. If you go on the system and pre-register, you'll probably be offered an appointment within a week, so we have availability right now, we have the vaccines, so we're just really trying to reach people that might not know it's there. We're hearing anecdotally that there's people that still want the vaccine and we have it available, so we need to make that connection so they know it is available.
I think spreading the word that how quick they process you, because I went and got mine.
Last Friday.
Last Friday. And when I got to Alexander's, Mary's, the line was like, oh my God, you know, it was one of those, like, ugh. So I could see where people would get discouraged, so I got in the line, it was literally around the building and, and it flew, you know, by the time I got in, had to wait my 15 minutes, thank God my last name's B, if it was T or S, the line was a little bit longer, but 30 minutes. That was after waiting my 15 minutes, they had tables, man, it flowed very well, I actually texted that, but then I had a friend of mine that was scheduled at noon, he called me, oh man, this line's around, you know, and I said, no, trust me, it goes quick, you know, I did that, the same thing this morning, he got in line. So I think if anything, to talk to people about how quick they actually do get you through those things, that was my experience, because I could see where you would pull up and you're like, ah, you know, boy, this is eight hours waiting to, you know, ham and stuff, and so.
Um, Miosha in the state did extend their remote work rules for another six months, so we will continue operating under our current model with employees rotating in staff and working remotely. But as part of that, we had initially heard that the State of Michigan employees on the other side of the building would not be returning to at least July, but that was prior to this extension, so at this point, we're not sure when we'll see the State of Michigan staff return in our building, but if we hear any news, we'll keep you updated. Our auditors are in right now, the audit has begun. We are hopeful that everything will be able to be done and completed on time this year. I know last year we had a few delays and we did file for an extension for our audit, but right now, everything looks like it should be completed on time. And as part of that, on your consent agenda, there was the notification that we did receive the Government Finance Officers Award for our 2019 CAFER, so we are very happy about that, especially with the year we had last year in the audit and being short-staffed, so definitely kudos to Dina for that, that's a lot of work to get that to put together. And next month, we will be coming to you with our first round of budget adjustments, mostly grant and standard stuff. We're not really looking at doing any COVID-related budget adjustments yet until we get more information on the funding, where we need to deposit it and how that has to be accounted for. I was on a call earlier today, actually two different calls, one with NACO and one with MAC regarding the funds, and it appears that the guidance on these funds or some official guidance, everyone's saying should be out towards the beginning of May, so we should have something official here coming down pretty soon, and as soon as I get that, I will share that with you. And that's all I have this evening.
Uh, motion received and filed minister's report.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, miscellaneous business, if anybody wants to go on the tour of the old Art Van Building, Larry Jones is going to open that up here at 7:00, so if any of you guys want to go check it out, I'm going to pop in there and take a peek. Last time we were in there, they were going to town on that thing, so you're more than welcome to stick your head in there. I think he's going to open these side doors over here, I told him. Um, receiving file.
Motion to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support. All in favor? Aye. Adjournment.
So moved.
Support. All in favor? Aye. All right. Here. That's enough, Jay, everybody. Whoa. I don't want to.